Increases for staff and also the items in the district improvement plan. It was about 31,000.
These are new enrollments or have actually happened or in the district?
They're potential.
Okay.
Could be more.
Faculty enrollments?
It's...
Or staff?
Staff, yeah. It doesn't have to be faculty, it could be a paraprofessional.
Okay.
Could be custodian.
And it's because your health plan was more attractive?
I think both plans are strong, but I think ours is about 20% less in cost.
Okay.
About 1,900 and I think it's about 2,300 and change for the town. We both contribute 75%. So I will say just one other comment on that is that we've been doing a survey of other communities to find out, well, other school districts to find out. In some cases, that's towns because they're part of a town plan to find out what their health plans look like so that I can have that, do some comparison. I know a lot of towns and schools, many in the area now have deductive plans. So we're gonna have to look at that. I think that'll be something we look at in the fall.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have a discussion, but that's not gonna be something that I think we can look at during the...
In the middle of the year.
In the middle of the year and kind of bringing the three contracts together, there's enough issues that I didn't feel like it was a good idea to try to do that.
If it's possible physically to avoid a high deductible plan, that would be fine with me.
Yeah.
Just in terms of the impact on the employees.
Yeah.
But we'd have to see what the cost looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
Just for some feedback on that.
Yeah. So we'll look at that. I mean, what I was told is that I was shown kind of the benchmark plans and that there are plans that don't necessarily have high deductibles, but they have individual deductible family, but I don't feel like informed enough now to say. All I know is that you guys have a strong plan. I've listed the capital plus here at the bottom. I did just want to point out that 95,000 of that is basically replace an article that exists now that we're gonna return because we have to spend this out of the regional budget. So it's really net 95,000 less than this, but we were advised we should ask for it in the assessment this year because we should be spending it out of the regional budget in FY '20.
Is that the HVAC article?
It's the access to the HVAC.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we passed that at a town meeting, the last annual town meeting.
We did.
And then...
It's being delayed till the work's been done.
Yes, I know. Will we have to take it up again at this town meeting? Will you use under warrant?
No, just under their capital assessment.
It'll be under the assessment.
Yeah, it's under the assessment.
Yeah, their warrant articles will be moved into a capital assessment line item in the budget. So we'll have to track those with you to make sure that you guys have what you need, that it's being used in a timely fashion and all that kind of stuff.
So I will just say we'll track those separately for each school going forward. This is just a list of the two. The first, so I mentioned the 95,000. The other two items, I think I've shared these before, well, actually it might have been with the capital planning committee, I don't know if it was with the FinCom. So the building existing conditions analysis is to look at...
I might have to grab a chair.
It's to look at the building and develop a long-term...
Okay, yeah. That would have been great if you had it last year.
Yeah, so this is...
Just keep that going.
Yeah.
Part of that planning process.
Can you have a copy of this from Mary?
Sure.
Mary, that's good.
Hi, Mary. That's my copy. I'll just give you this one.
This is presentation on, excuse me, Berle and Boylston School District Budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So if there's no questions on capital, I'll keep going.
Sure, just the building existing conditions analysis. If you're in the process of that, it wouldn't hurt to let us know and we'll tag along or whatever, just as part of that analysis.
Sure.
Probably gonna be a consultant?
It's gonna be, I think we have to go out to bid, though we did get contacted by somebody who might do it for less, he's in the community, and I don't wanna go too far.
Yeah, don't go too far.
Yeah. So it's, yes, we certainly can, it's open.
Great, great. That would be super.
So...
That means?
Sorry, yes. Okay, so I'm gonna jump to Tohato now. And so I'll talk a bit about what's driving the increase. So Tohato is on the right-hand side. We don't have to worry about municipal transfers because it's only affecting elementary schools. So we've listed FY '19 operating budget. We have a significant increase this year of 594,000. And really what's driving that is we have one special ed student from each elementary school plus an additional special ed student that came back to the district, to Tohato. It's actually out in another district, at a placement. So we have three students. It's fairly expensive for placements plus transportation, and that's driving a significant chunk of the increase between special ed. It's close to half of what the increase is and charter school tuitions as well. I did wanna just say on the charter school tuition increase, these are people who lived in another town and moved to Berle and they were already attending a charter school. We've become responsible for it, but we didn't necessarily lose them to a charter school. We didn't really ever have the opportunity to bring them into Tohato. So it's unfortunate, but we are seeing an increase in the charter school for that as well. So that's the main drivers of the increase for Tohato.
Do these increases are split between, sorry, that is an obvious question anyways, between Berle and Boylston, right?
They are, they are. And, yeah, I mean, in addition to that, there's contractual increases for teacher salaries. That's about 72,000. And then our regional assessment increased significantly. And we're basically needing to catch up on our unfunded liability and that's a piece of it. And so we're hopeful it kind of levels out after this year.
That's Worcester each other time, right?
Yeah, part of the same.
Yeah, we've got an increased assessment from them as well.
Yeah, we also have one retiree which is contributing to the increase as well.
Okay.
As far as the capital goes, I have on the next page, I have a list. We typically only have bond principal and interest payments. So the Tohato project's been finished. This represents all of the full cost of the project over the next 15 years. It's gonna, the bonds are gonna continue. We set up the second bond to kind of match the length of the first bond. And so those amounts are, we had already budgeted most of that last year, so this is not much of an increase. The other two items are, the first one for 15,000 is window film that can, adheres to access points in the building that prevents the windows from shattering in the event of a dangerous situation such as a live shooter incident. And it provides time for first responders to get to the building by preventing access. So that's something we felt was important. We've obtained some funding for it through a grant. We're gonna complete some of the work in FY '19 and some of the work in FY '20, but we don't have enough money in FY '19 to complete the work. And we're doing this as a side note in Berle, at Berle Memorial and Boylston Elementary too. And we've received a grant for those as well. The second one is, I don't know if people recall, we had an issue with school closure on January 2nd, 2017. 17, 18?
Cold.
So our oil tanks are above ground. I don't think that's common. I know it's not common, I don't know what else it has, but in severe cold weather, we had very cold weather last December, mid, the late December time period during the break, I remember because I was in Quebec and it was colder. The oil congealed and basically, you know, it had been a few days and basically didn't have heat. We got it up and running. What this will do, we've done two things. We've obtained a fuel additive that will lower the freezing point. I've told it's about 16 without this additive and it brings it close to zero with the additive. But we are in New England and I don't think it would be unreasonable for us to expect that we're gonna have some time in the next few years have it go below zero. And we felt like this was an additional measure. It also, you know, for some reason, somebody doesn't add the additive or it just gives us more security. So this is a, it's a line that provides basically radiant heat through a metal tube with glycol as the liquid inside it. And so if we have severe cold weather, this will be, prevent the system from congealing again. So Jeff and I felt like, you know, our first job is to have school open and the one above that is for school to be safe. So those were the two items we had in our capital plan.
And just a note, yeah, and the window film, that's just part of it. There's an overall safety plan that includes some other things in the building that were in the above level services, like the, we have a social worker, it was a .8. We moved the position to a 1.0 position as well as above level services thing. So we're trying to approach this safety issue in various ways, not just the physical elements in the school, but also, you know, the social emotional piece with students. And in terms of the window film, one of the questions that came up at our last meeting, I know that we were asked this question, well, what about first responders? Because if we keep somebody out, you know, trying to smash in, will it keep a first responder out, like fire or police? And I know fire, first responders, I talked to said, no, we can get in. But they, well, before we have this film put out the windows, the company will consult with both Berle and Boylston first responders to talk to them about what this is and go through a whole procedure with them.
So the next page is just a very high-level view of the regions. It's actually all three schools. And what, the reason I showed this is it shows the total spending in the school, not just, the blue part is taxpayer-funded, the general fund, and the orange part is from revolving funds and grants. And so you can see our overall general fund expenditures are going up 5.9%, but the overall spending is going up 4.1%. And what we've, we have some, we've had some significant surpluses or reserves for school choice. And we also have a rural schools grant going away, but we have some reserves for school choice and we've kind of made a decision to spend them down to an extent. It's affecting Tohato and Boylston Elementary more than Berle. I feel like we're, in the Berle Memorial School, we're able to bring the reserves at a comfortable level and we don't feel like we need to necessarily spend them down. It will serve as a protective measure in future years if you see growth in your population, student age children, and Berle Memorial's expenses go up, we can tap those to offset the increases.
Well, we've got a whole bunch of apartments coming in.
Yeah, right.
That's what we considered.
Sure.
Yeah. So that's just a little bit of a picture of the overall perspective.
About how large are those reserves, say in Berle?
So Berle Memorial, this is around 300,000 and we bring in about 80,000 a year. Might be a little bit less this year. And this is, we get 5,000 for school choice students. So, you know, we feel like it serves as the stabilization fund for the school in a way.
Okay.
If something came up and we had to do something, we wouldn't necessarily have to go to town meeting. We would get school committee approval to access the school choice fund.
And you call it a school choice?
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's what it is, yes.
So it's school choice revenue that comes in and we apply a certain percentage against the budget to offset teacher salaries.
And keep it right around 300,000?
In Berle, we're able to do that. And the reserves are higher in Tohato, but we actually have 90 school choice students. So we bring in about $450,000 a year.
For Tohato.
So the reserve is higher, but as a percentage of what we bring in, it's not as high. And as a percentage of what we spend in that school is not as high. So we feel like we have a healthy reserve in Berle and Tohato and we're spending down Tohato's and Boylston may have a little bit less of a reserve. And we're keeping those balances separate by school.
Okay. Good thing to do, keep track of it a little bit.
Yeah.
But you could, if you had to move it, move it from one to the other with approval of the committee?
We could. I mean, our intent is to not have to do that unless there's an emergency.
Right, right.
And, you know, if we get to the point down the line where we have kind of equal levels in the schools, then we might look at it more flexibly. But we also felt like with the transition, we wanted to be transparent and not have people think that we're shifting money all over the place.
We also don't have a predictor right now for how many children will be added to the school. So it's part of our long-term plan and we don't wanna come in two years and say, you think this out. We'll have something, you know, some point in place.
So the last page is a high-level assessment summary. And so this is different than the spending. This nets, so we received Chapter 78 from the state. There's a certain amount, what we've done in our regional agreement is essentially keep each town at its, each school at its starting point as of FY '19 so that when we regionalize, we don't see one going way up or way down. And we took the state's information. It's pretty complicated, I'm not gonna be going too far into the weeds. You can just steer me back if I am, but they provide information on the minimum local contribution, which is based on a few factors. It's basically on the foundation budget, which is based on the number of students in the town and the demographic of the town and factors like that. So it develops a foundation budget, which is considered the minimum amount you should spend and it says how much the fund should be contributing towards that. We took the minimum local contribution, the increase in that from year to year, and applied that to the Chapter 70, meaning to say that's how we'll increase each school's share. Then there was a little balance that we had to apportion and we apportioned that based on student count. So that's outlined in the regional agreement. We followed that. As there's, what it does is it will cushion, it tends to cushion. If you have an increase in your budget, you're gonna tend to get a little bit more Chapter 70 money. If you tend to get a decrease, you'll probably get a little less Chapter 70 money. I will say overall, though, we didn't get, as a district, as a region, much at all in terms of an increase. I think it was around 1%. So while our expenses are growing in a certain amount, our assessments are growing in a higher amount because the revenue that we're getting to offset the assessment is only growing by 1% while our expenses have grown by more. You know, this is happening in a transition year. It is kind of a challenge this year, but what we did try to do was to look at what we were asking for from the towns in a holistic way and tried to save. And we felt like we could cut back in the capital this year. And so even the 147 includes 95 that we had previously requested. It'll be returned to you in free cash. It actually was 103. So the bottom line from a year-over-year perspective is it's about a 4.4% increase. And for the FY '19 column, some of these are, I mean, for Tohato, it's straightforward. For the operating assessment for Berle, we didn't technically have the assessment budget. We had a dollar budget, but I looked at the Chapter 70 money and backed that out to arrive at what last year's number was. So we feel like this represents essentially a 4.4 increase to the town for Berle Memorial and Tohato. In the presentation, I think I emailed it, has all the detailed slides behind it that might be a little hard to go through.
Yeah, I saw that.
But I'm happy to, you know, if anybody wants to call me, I'm happy to walk through it, sit down with anybody.
Okay.
And...
Certainly if you go through the district improvement plan and you wanna talk about any of the above level services that contribute to the budget, we'd also be happy to talk about those. We can talk about them now if you want or you could look through them and let us know. We can always kind of go through those numbers as well, so.
So we've got a couple of new special ed students. We have three, I guess.
Three.
These are all from Tohato, yeah?
They're all placed out from Tohato, yeah.
But one's from Berle, one's from, how many are from Berle?
So I don't, I don't know off the top of my head for the out-of-district special ed students what town they're from, but for the charter school assessment, those, I believe, moved to Berle. I think one moved to Boylston as well. And they had been, I think two of them were already at AMSA when they moved here and they just stayed at AMSA.
Well, I mean, there's students, we need to educate them.
Right, yeah, right.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm curious, because I remember a conversation, this may have predated both of the U of M, I'm sure. But on the next page, it talks about the Special Education Reserve Fund, which I don't remember a lot about, but I recall a conversation, I think with your predecessors about, they were trying to keep monies in this to offset just this kind of circumstance.
I'm going to, maybe to bring it up. I think the legislation had just passed. So now, since then, we actually took a summary that I think another district used and kind of modified it. So what we recommend is that the town approves it and what it does is essentially serves as a stabilization fund for special ed. If a student were to move in during the year and you have a significant unanticipated cost or even, you know, we're budgeting now, something could happen in May and, you know, we find out then, but it's too late to, you know, adjust upward, this serves as a reserve to cover that. And we have placements that can go from as low as 45,000, I think, for a collaborative up to severe needs, we're 300,000 plus transportation. And particularly in Berle Memorial and Boylston, the elementary school level, the budget, that's one-tenth of the budget almost. We don't have the capacity to absorb that. So this isn't something we need to fund every year. It's, the idea would be to get it to a level where if we, you know, our thought is over time, we'd wanna fund it.
Sure.
What we wanted to do this year was just request approval for the towns to approve the fund, but not necessarily, but not put any money in it.
Okay.
We also have to work out, you know, I don't know how we come up with how much each town or each school contributes and what would the rules be? Like if you, you know, do we just say everybody's gonna contribute or do we say that if we had to spend out of it, that whatever school is the one that had to draw from it is the school that replaces it? Like, and I just wanna, I don't wanna necessarily make that decision.
So this is new across the board?
Yeah.
Because there's not anything to draw on in terms of people's experience right now?
And it's easy to, it's easy to fund in a one district, you know, if it was a single district like Shrewsbury, it's the town of Shrewsbury. So, you know, you just fund it from the town. Here, we have three schools and one school's funded by one town, one by the other, and one is split. So, you know, if we had...
Well, we'll figure something, we'll figure something out.
And again, we're trying to, thinking about this, we're trying to put in perspective again of this kind of long range, at least five-year out planning. It's one of the areas, it's one of the only areas that you almost have no control of. It's governed by state and federal law. So if you have a student or you have a student that's been outplaced, there's really not a lot you can do. I mean, you have to pay for it.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. I mean, I'm speaking for myself, my attitude is this is a student like any other student that we need to educate.
Absolutely.
And, you know, but in some years, we have one time, I mean, this year we may be tight, but in some years we have one-time revenue coming in that might be appropriate for something like this.
Would you have to appropriate that at town meeting, though?
I assume so.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, you know, we can't do it.
Yeah, so for some reason it didn't happen and we're in May and then we're stuck, like we really can't cover it.
Well, I mean, for this year, yeah, that's a possibility, but I mean, we're just getting this started.
But if it was a million dollars in the fund, then...
Yeah, knock on wood. You know, so far this year, we're decent.
I mean, if something happens this year, we'll cope as best we can, but I'm saying for the future.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, and I think we might even be able to put money in this at a town meeting in the fall if we, I'll have to check and see what's permissible at a special town meeting as opposed to the annual. But, you know, we can figure, just like we, we're gonna be transferring money this year into our stabilization fund and we can look at, view this as the same service.
Okay. The other thing is we felt like there was enough noise and change with all the things that are switching in the budget that we just wanted to get the concept out, which I thought people would be supportive, and then work out the more complicated pieces where people might have opinions separately and then you can work out how to fund it. So I thought was to separate that from this year, what I think we do, you know, we have some increases for transition that we're absorbing.
I wonder if this might already exist in other states where we might be able to draw on.
Or in other districts.
Well, this is new in Massachusetts right now, in terms of the, they might have done it de facto.
They may have done it de facto, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other districts may have done it on their own.
Yeah, if there's other experience we can draw on that's applicable, that's...
Yeah, I can talk, so there's some districts that have adopted it in Massachusetts.
Okay, great.
I just need to find one that's a region where it might be a little bit more complicated than a municipal district.
Okay, and I mean, if, you know, some folk from Berle need to get together with some folk from Boylston with you and work out something together in the same room. So you're not running back and forth saying, well, they said, well, they said, because that's kind of silly, then we'd be happy to do that.
Great, that sounds good.
Okay. Anybody have any questions just looking at this right now?
I was just gonna say, Bob, have you had feedback from Boylston?
I think it was similar to here. It was like, there's a lot here, there's a little bit of a, I think that thought was, you know, there's a little bit of a transition, you know, on the, more than a typical increase maybe, but they understood. And I think they're looking at this, this is new, we need to kind of get through. We're also, we're also talking to them a lot about the process issues of putting it out in capital assessment versus warrant articles.
Yeah.
And actually, there is one thing I forgot to add too, which came up, is that it looks like the, that we may need to budget two months of benefits in the summer in the town because technically they're, the contract span from August to August for teachers and for school year staff. So June and I and Boylston staff met and we kind of talked about the transition and we've had the, and so we might need to make a budget adjustment, but whatever comes out of the region will go back to Boylston, it'll be net zero from a tax perspective. So I don't know if there's a deadline for when the numbers need to be published. It shouldn't take us too long to come up with that.
Yeah, once we get a definite answer.
Yeah, I think, I think we have it.
Okay, for this, for FY '20 budget?
FY '20.
Okay. If it's gonna increase the numbers that we need to know, then it would be helpful to know that within like the next week or 10 days.
Okay. It's gonna, it would increase the school but decrease the town, so it'll be net zero.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's just a matter of which line it would be in.
Then I'm not so worried about it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was like, hmm, okay. Because, you know, this is our budgeting system.
Yeah, okay.
Right now, which is completely bonkers, but it worked very well in the 19th century. Okay. Does anyone have any, any final questions? We may come back, you know, to you both, one or both, you know, if things come up. We promised to press break in first.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you again for coming. We appreciate it very much. Next year, we will make every effort to actually make the meeting with everybody at the same time. So I appreciate it.
We'll make sure, we'll remember to remind you. I think we forgot to...
No, you did invite us, we just, you know. Well, I thought it would be good since we have a bunch of new folks for you guys to meet them too.
Yeah.
So that we know who we're talking about.
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for coming. All right. So let's, I think I gave this out last week. This is, this is a revised budget for the accountant. No? Okay, I may not have, I may be lying.
It's okay. I'll take it today.
There you go.
So are you waving the next thing you're supposed to be waving?
Yes, that's what I was waving around.
Would it be this one?
It would be that one, yes. Okay, which I believe is an increase in hours for June. So I know that you need to go home because you need to get up and like go somewhere in the morning. So why don't we do you folks next, and we'll make you sit there, because you live in town, so. They're like, thank you ever so much for that. So, yeah, so we can do you folks next, that'd be great. Bring up the chairs, we might have somebody get a bigger table.
We might want to think about that.
Yeah, we could do that. We haven't fired us in a while, so.
What do you mean, get a real table?
Yeah, like a, like a conference table or some crazy notion like that.
Yeah, maybe we should clean it up, because then it's not a lot of legroom. Some fold it up.
Well, that's true. Usually, usually conservation meetings are there on the same night.
Wednesdays are tough.
Yeah, but we might just, if those tables, do we know if those tables are...
Those are probably the tables that we replaced with new tables, because you could, like, use it for marble racks.
Well, you know, we can get, we know that they would go straight. Take what we can get.
There was fear that somebody might get hurt on them, so.
Oh, well, you know.
We could, we could check with the buildings and see at the end of the year, maybe.
It's probably fifty-five, thirty-three.
Well, it's, okay, they've got five people on the committee, believe me. Okey-dokey, so thanks for coming.
Yep. We are here to have you take a second look at the accountant's budget, and due to, I don't know if it's like, because we're growing, there's all these different departments have so much, so much more work to do. June is probably spending forty hours a week.
Fifty-three hours last week.
A week.
June is probably underworked and overpaid.
Yes, 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 we know. No, I know, yes. Yeah, and we might, I was understanding this and thought of, like, moving you out of the firing line from down there, and, you know, sticking the town administrator in there, so that when all God's children come into the building...
Maybe, yeah, it might work, it might work, that's what I'm hoping, yeah, it would be nice.
Put an electric fence on it.
But they could still find me.
Well, yeah, but presumably you want people that are looking for you to find you instead of just like, hi, I'm looking for...
It's pretty easy to just step in there right now.
Yes. It is. I do have a question off the bat. And let me say, from my point of view, I'm supportive, I mean, I think this is an obviously needed change. But I, from, my understanding from personnel was they were going to try to do this in two pieces, raise June's rate this year and raise her hours next year. And we haven't created all of the magic spreadsheet yet, but I have a suspicion this year is, it's looking like it's going to be tight. So it could be difficult to do both these things in the same year.
Right, right, we understand that.
Yeah, anyway, just wanted to know.
Yeah, and I think Personnel, that's probably the next appointment we would have to go to, or at least to give them information on.
Well, Personnel came up with these numbers, these are not, like, official numbers?
Right.
It's just, no, no, I'm just saying, that they did, but they felt, when speaking with Personnel, it was a big jump, and it is a big jump, if you look at it, it's a huge jump. So, and I think for them, it was, like you just said, is that it may be easier to go in two stages versus one.
I would just say that when you're looking, when you're thinking about cutting, prioritize this as one of the last things to cut rather than first, because she's been really underpaid for a long time, so there's a real, you know, trend of...
I agree.
Yeah.
And thank you for saying that, and just so you know, I am very supportive of this happening.
Thank you.
The only question for me is, like, can we do, can we do it this year? Or is it this year and next year in two pieces? Which, if we can do it this year, I mean, you know, I'm one vote on the committee, but we'll see. But, you know, from my point of view, the town, you are one of the people in the town that has been chronicling underpaid for a very long time.
And it's just that I would like a plan.
Yeah.
Just because for the last five years, I've kind of heard that.
This doesn't happen next year.
Unfortunately, it's not really ever getting where it needs to go.
You don't want to lose her, she's doing a great job.
Hey, June, probably.
Yes, yes. Okey-dokey. Well, you win the brevity award, that's unusual.
Do you really think we want to hang out a long time in more meetings?
I mean, I can understand that. Okay, the fire department, like, snoozing back there now.
I did also revise it for the...
Can you talk about two parts? One is increase in hour, the other is reclassification from...
The first, I'll get to you in just a sec. The first piece that we already saw, and the one that came to us before this one that's labeled revised, was an increase in June's rate.
Right.
She also has been paid based on thirty-five hours intersectional.
So that, but that's the two pieces.
Those are great, that's correct.
And the rate simply brought her up to what an average accountant makes.
Right, yeah. About three years ago now, we brought you from like, nothing.
Twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-seven.
From nothing to like, the below, right below the last.
Last year, the amount that I had asked for last year would have given me just to what a starting town accountant makes.
Yes. Thank you, that is what I was, those are the words I was looking for.
Yeah.
So you're saying you started a while ago?
Thirty years ago.
Okay, well.
I mean, there's no rush.
She's been very patient.
Yep.
I had just a quick question, would it be five eights or four tens? How would you do the forty hours? Would it be Monday through Friday?
I'm working forty hours plus right now.
I mean...
And I've been working forty hours plus for the last five years.
She is here on Friday.
And you're here on Friday, and I know some part-time employees are not here on Friday.
No, no, I've always been here on Friday, always.
I'm just asking, a clarification, I just, you know, put it out there, because that, it may come up.
She eats and sleeps here, yeah.
Next year, we're going to put a cot in for capital item.
Well, we're building a dormitory for the environment, so. So maybe we are, we're on tape here, so. That was not a successful...
Hold on now, hold on now. Any questions?
Do you want to, do you want to...
Yeah, yeah.
Confirm the software, though?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
But you were doing the salary thing first.
Yeah, I know, yeah, go ahead.
I did revise it, and I did take off QuickBooks, because I did lower that. I did not take off the asset manager software. I talked to the other departments, and nobody has any interest in it. David argued that I needed to wait for town administrator to come in, to make sure that everybody was using the same software. And this is a software that I need for accounting only, because I can't let anybody else touch it, because it's for depreciation.
Right.
So I talked to the other departments, building department assessors, police, the majority of them, and none of them are really interested, other than capital planning.
Okay, it's, so...
And I actually sent it to John, and had him take a look at the software, so that it would do what you guys might need to do. So I could do reports, I just can't let you have access to it, because if you change one number on me, it changes all my accounting depreciation, which is kind of defeats the purpose of having it.
It's kind of a, it's a different use for the data.
Yes, yes, but that's what this software is for.
And it's dedicated for asset management, for depreciation.
Yes.
Is there option for fee-only access, just curious?
It can, yes. It's just then I would have to buy more, then I would have to buy more licenses.
This says two licenses, right?
Correct, so that the accountant and I could, I mean, the assistant can work on it simultaneously.
I saw that.
Okay. So those were the other things, that you're going to see a decrease in the amount of the expenses.
Okey-dokey.
And this is real.
I didn't think it was fake.
Well, that one, I'd be asking for a little more.
You know, some people turn in their budget, and I'm pretty sure it's fake, you're not one of those people, so that's okay. We're on camera, so I had to say that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you guys have any questions? No?
No, I'm taking it in.
Okay, sure. Yes, this is, this is fire post time for Mary, like, you have lots of paper and numbers on it.
Yeah.
We want to welcome you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome, what, you're June?
June Poland, I am.
Very fortunate. All right. We exchanged email, now it's all together.
Yes, it's official. I'm your town accountant.
There you go.
It's about time I met you.
Okay.
She has been working, see, she's not out wandering the halls like some other people.
Well, that's why she's the official greeter, too, which I think we're trying to change, because, you know. Okay, anything else from you folks?
I think we're meeting with you next week, too, the entire board?
Yes, you are. You said, we want twice. We want all three of us next time, and we were like, okay, fine. Yeah, I heard, I mean, you just can't do it enough, it should be seven-thirty next week.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, that's why I was late, because you're always at seven-thirty, and then you were suddenly at seven. Luckily, I slept.
Yeah, well, depending on, during our really busy times, we sometimes move back to seven for the scary, because we want to make them wait longer, or if they feel like they're waiting longer. See, they're new, we have to haze them, I think. They're like, who are you people, and why are we talking to you?
I am the other guy.
Okay, all right, that's what I was going to check.
I know that. I was worrying about that.
You are doing so well.
All right, I know.
I know, yeah.
We maybe needed something more generic there, or, because it would have made sense if you just made it one day, everybody's...
So, they're just kidding, saying you guys could fall off and sit in the hot seat now.
Yeah.
See, we're competing for ratings with the ZBH tonight, I think.
Do you guys need support, like, do you want us to stick...
Well, it's something very brief. Yeah.
Well, I don't know, we need support.
Okay, we always need support, yes.
It's okay.
Not huge issues, but some underage in our budget.
Okay.
So, and I think I told you folks that we had a broken truck.
Yes.
And the truck, the truck is a nineteen-eighty-one Mack, with, it was retrofitted for water delivery. We use that for our municipal water supply truck, which is on the, on the study, and it's on, on the warrant to be...
Be replaced.
But the problem is that's, we don't know when we're going to find a new one, it could be year out if we have it built. This truck is dead, dead on the road right now. Today, I had a mechanic with the original, well, the company that did the, did the fit for the truck, that made it into a fire delivery vehicle.
Yeah.
Came down, saw, went through it, he wanted, he requested that we take it up to Vermont where their shop is. I looked on the map, it was not Browborough, it was like up in the White Mountains, and I don't feel like skiing up there right now. And this truck is not good on hills, this is a truck, barely makes it out here on Dallas street.
Once in a while.
Yeah, and this, so it's not, it's not going up there.
So this is your, this is the tanker, right?
This is the tanker.
Yeah.
And so the estimate that we received, the original, the original adequate was for it to be driven up to Vermont, where they utilize their tools, and to put a separate second relief valve in, which would release the pressure, sort of a retrofit. And Jim Spinney was there, he asked if they could do it onsite at the highway garage. They said, no, it's got to come up, we have to use our tools to do it. So I had my lieutenant contact them and ask them what just the repair would be, just for the way it is, and get an explanation of why it happened, and we'll try not to do that again.
You're working with an ancient vehicle at this point, so.
Right, right.
So the pump brought out the pressure and...
We, I think what happened is, we may have used the wrong large diameter hose to fill it. And that, and that, the relief valve's small on the truck, it's only made for a small diameter hose.
Some sort of adapter or something you used, okay.
And so that, so to have the truck just repaired, have the company come down to Berlin, we're just, they're going to charge us a mileage fee back and forth. The total bills, it's twenty-six-hundred dollars and three, twenty-six-oh-three, plus shipping on the parts. I, I would be happy if we didn't have to spend a nickel on the truck, but the truck's been very cheap for us to own over the years. But it's vital to get the truck back in service for us, so. So we're here just to ask you if you will, okay, the fund transfer is like, so we could just get this truck fixed as soon as possible.
You mean a reserve fund transfer to pay for it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we don't want people to burn down and not have you put the fire out, so it seems like a good idea, yeah.
Okay.
And I take it we don't have another truck that...
That will do this, no. No, we rely on mutually, but I think that, I think that the way we respond to calls, the time we get there would be, we're defensive. We'd be defensive.
We're basically putting a Band-Aid on the truck.
Oh, I know.
Just to get through to hopefully town meeting when we get approval for the new truck, so it's...
Yeah, we have a committee.
I'm sorry, there's no maintenance, fund...
Is there any maintenance, you guys have no maintenance money in your budget?
Negative, negative.
Well, you've spent it, right?
We've spent it, and we're also overdue for maintenance right now on the trucks, for our, for our fleet maintenance. So that's another issue.
How, how overdue is it?
Well, I just got a di, I got a diary read on the, from the company that was doing it last year.
Okay.
So, and I don't have the figure for that right now for you.
Yeah, no, no, I was just wondering about the time on it, so it's about a year overdue?
No, it's, we're, we're due, or just overdue now. So, so I'll have to review that and see if that will make it to July first.
Okay.
But, but this is something that just, we just, in my opinion...
So it's twenty-six-hundred dollars, is the...
Yeah, plus the, plus the shipping charge, so I'd say that they'll probably profit up to three thousand dollars when we're done.
And when do you need, I mean, you need to...
I like the, I like the, okay, and get it moving as soon as possible.
Okay, do you know the process for doing that?
For...
Getting a reserve fund transfer?
I do not, I do not.
Well, here we are. We're all here.
So what you do is, write, write a request.
Okay.
You give it to these, correctly, it goes to June's meeting.
Yeah, technically you do. If you want me to go down and fill it out, I'll give you the form to fill out. You're up for it.
So, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that, so we can, because you guys are, you're here.
Okay.
There is money in the reserve fund, there's a forum. Wow, we're like, this is like, you know...
Well, but does, does that work?
One-stop service, I can tell you, I've never seen this happen, so, you know, so you chose a good night.
I'll order a ticket tonight.
I wasn't even expecting you guys tonight, so you chose a good night.
Right, we're like Gypsies, we just show up.
There you go.
I thought June said it would be a posted meeting. This is a posted meeting for you guys?
This is a posted meeting for both of them, yeah, that's why, that's why our friend Smiley is here.
Got it.
This, I think, qualifies as an emergency, so.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
Yeah, okay. I have one other issue, too, for you, with you, but...
Sure, go ahead.
So, so Jamie, Jamie?
So when the former chief did the FY twenty budget, instead of giving a pay increase, I guess the coal increase, for the three captains, he actually gave us a pay cut. He mistakenly, mistakenly deducted the percentage versus increasing the percentage.
Well, that's not so good.
Well, we were wondering if it was our fault, if we wanted to make a better job, so, so I just did some...
In lieu of a performance reveal.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Going out to the board, gave us no cut.
I'm going to work a lot harder, so I can burn that back, but...
I would hope so, and obviously you've received the message, so, okay.
I guess we know what we're saying. But just, I did some brief, the three captains averaged sixty-eight hours a month. It's basically a fifty-five cent hourly increase, so it just boils down to under a five-hundred-dollar deficit in the payroll, and we just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, can you show me the spreadsheet here that it's on? Because we have a bunch of fun spreadsheets on here.
So I am working on this one.
Chief C's worksheet.
That's Chief C's worksheet.
Oh, the handwritten ones, those are the best.
Those are our favorites.
Speaking of software needs.
We especially like the handwritten ones that have a lot of cross-outs in them.
Oh, those were the best, yeah, one year we had a budget mistake, because we couldn't make out someone seven from a nine. Yeah, that's always funny.
And you're comfortable with your maintenance for next year, just, just while you're... And you're comfortable with your maintenance for next year, just, just while you're?
So, we're reconciling the budget right now, going through everything and diving into FY20's budget. On this one, there was some cuts that he made from the first selectmen's meeting, I guess, as the, as they were going forward with the budget process. So there's a couple areas of concern, but I think, I think we're gonna be able to, to get through, I think.
We have some issues with gear. We have five gears only has a ten-year lifespan. And I'm having a review, inventory review of the gear, we have some new firefighters that wanna go to the academy in the fall. And we're scrounging for gear to, to, to meet that for them. That's, that's a big one. A lot of the department is past the fifty percent age on the gear. So, that, that sort of thing.
Okay.
We're just, we're just getting a hold of right now, so.
Okay.
Have you had a chance to review the budget enough to perhaps want to make some changes before it's too late for finance?
That was why I was asking, it's, you know.
Okay, well, let me, let me, let me pen down this one thing first. So, this is the handwritten spreadsheet that we love so much. We've, she's not the only one that did this, lots of people did handwritten spreadsheets, we hope that will go away. But, um, so this one was a hundred and four, six, fifty-eight, so you're saying it should be five hundred more?
Four hundred and forty-eight, eighty. I, I.
We typed it up, oh my god.
I.
Okay.
So, we, we marched out, we, we took an average of an eighth-month period, just because we didn't have all of the numbers.
And that, we averaged that out to come up with that number, so it, it's not a lot, but it's, um. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to make sure that this.
Yep.
Matches up with here.
So it would be that number plus that number would be, would, would make it whole.
Okay. Uh, so the total.
If you can make out my, my Excel hyroglyphics.
Well, now that your Excel hyroglyphics are much clearer than the, you know.
The, the, this is the bottom number that it's, that we're off by based on the average. So the only thing that this doesn't account for, and I don't think you can account for it, is this is from, you know, who, you know, going forward with increasing calls, that might, number may be off a little bit, but at least, yeah, at least that'll get us back on track.
Okay. So, when you were making that, you were working off of this, right?
So, I took, I took the numbers from, this is what he brought forward.
Yeah.
So, this is the, the difference, we were making this last year.
Yep, yep.
And we got downgraded to this, this year. So I just took.
I think that was a boo-boo.
I, I think so, I think.
Okay.
So that was just, so I took that number.
Yep, okay.
With the average, to, the average of what we actually worked last year.
And you doubled what you put back on, so you didn't just go back to flat, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Right, so, I mean, it sounds like it's not only four hundred dollars to get it up beyond worth of cut. I mean, it sounds like all that's gonna do is get it back to level.
Yes, okay. Yeah.
No?
He has.
Jamie.
Oh, sorry.
So, no, that's okay, so.
It doesn't seem like, I mean, four hundred and, I'm, I'm kinda following on what Lisa just said, it seems like that's, is that only just gonna get you back to level, or does that get you back up?
So it could be worse.
So what was the COLA, what was the increase supposed to be?
This is what we made last year, right here, and this is what he put in the proposed FY20 budget. So I did the COLA based on this number.
Okay, which would be?
Which would be that.
Put you up to what?
Which.
Twenty-four ninety?
Yes, twenty-four ninety.
June, June gave us that.
Okay, so fifty-five cents more an hour.
Yeah, correct.
And then how many hours?
So it's based on an average of sixty-eight hours a month.
Twenty-two, forty-six?
Yeah.
But that's not a raise.
That's not a raise.
That's not a raise. It's, that's just the COLA.
That's COLA.
It was a dollar ninety.
Right, so, so those two numbers, if you multiply sixty-eight hours times.
So I took an average of sixty-eight hours a month.
Yeah, fifty-five.
Ten fifty, so it's thirty-seven, forty, which is a monthly deficit.
Yeah.
Times twelve months, came to the forty, four, four, eight, eight, zero.
But again, I feel like that's.
It seems low.
I don't feel like that's swinging you from negative to positive, I feel like all that's doing is swinging you from negative to zero.
So if this is what we're making right now.
It goes down, if the rest goes up.
Yeah.
If, if we're making twenty, the twenty-four, thirty-five, and I add.
Two point two five.
The two point two five percent, that gives us the fifty-five cent increase per hour. So, if I, if I didn't do it right, I'd love to learn.
June, you said that that was the increase, right, two point two five percent.
Yeah.
Is that what we added?
Two point two five.
It was all up for COLA.
Two point two five, I thought.
Okay.
Two point two five?
No, no, I just stopped.
Okay.
Yeah. So the net, yeah, so that is the net increase from the decrease to the number.
I think it was two point two five.
And that number, that twenty-four ninety.
I was thinking last year, but, I don't know.
So this is what we made, this is what we made.
Last year.
Last year. So FY20, we should make this plus.
Plus the COLA.
The COLA.
Right.
If I did that right.
You, you did, we just wondered, it just seems low.
It doesn't seem like much for.
Over nine.
Well, especially because.
That's an interstate traffic.
Well, I was, because his numbers are two dollars lower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if the, if the budget was two dol- the proposed budget was two dollars lower, times sixty-eight hours.
Higher.
Well, right, I mean, if it's sixty-eight hours times two dollars, that's.
No, the parts.
Um, I feel like that's already like thirteen, thirteen hundred dol- or, isn't that thirteen hundred dollars?
Yeah. Sixty-eight hours times two dollars is.
It's only a hundred and thirty. But that's only per month.
That's why they're the finance.
So, times twelve.
What could you do this?
Is that times nine?
Okay, yeah.
Because.
I'm so sorry.
I'm looking down this column of the FY19 rates.
Right, yep.
And then the FY20 rates.
Yep.
And for some, it goes down, and for others, it goes up.
Yeah, that was Chief Spakowski making a mistake, we think, rather than.
Right, right, but, but it, I would think it's gonna be more than four hundred bucks when you, when you work this out. So, I just wanna be sure that we get them all right.
Do you want me to run through how I came to this, and like, there's a lot of things up here, sorry?
No, no, that's okay, well, could you do this, right, could you just run through it with June at this moment?
Sure.
Like in the next.
Sure.
I mean, she's at school this week.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if you guys could check it with, go over it with June, because she doesn't, because she doesn't have enough to do, you know.
I bother her all the time.
Excellent.
Amy does all the work, right?
I say that to June, like, every time I run, I run like.
Whenever I can.
I knew she didn't have enough to do, so I showed up with more stuff.
And she's teaching me how to run a budget.
Excellent. But if, yeah, if you could just check the numbers with her and then let us know, that would be great.
Okay.
And if you, if you look at what you've got for maintenance, for next year's budget.
Beautiful, yeah.
And it looks, you know, if you think there needs to be a change, it would be very, very helpful for us to know that within the next week or ten days tops.
So, so we have about a week to, to.
Yes, you have a week to look at that.
I mean, it's kind of frightening how much, just how much equipment we have, then the tire, you're just looking at tires alone in the place.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And the thing that's scary is, a lot of the building projects from last year are starting to come to fruition this year, and, you know, on and on and on, so there is, as I track the numbers, we're going up, which is scary, so.
Construction project.
Construction projects.
In tandem.
Yeah.
Yeah, the apartments.
One of the big significant things that we're running into is simply doing lift assist, helping people up, especially at the Pleasant Street apartment complex. It's just the increase has been dramatic.
That's not revenue generating.
It doesn't.
It doesn't sound like a revenue generating.
No.
We're, no, wait, the Pleasant Street apartment complex, which one?
One thirty-five.
The park behind.
Yeah, the rear, one thirty-five rear.
Okay, is that, is that River Bridge, the three-story, no?
No, that's.
I'm not River Bridge, I'm sorry, the, um.
Northbrook.
Northbrook Village, too.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So what is, where is it that you're lifting people up there?
So, so this is what happens a lot, is there's a lot of.
This is called PR.
It's called gravity, I think.
It's called gravity. The aging population, you know, they're very independent, they wanna live alone.
Right.
And so, when they fall.
Yeah.
They either press their button, dial nine-one, and we, we call, we make sure they're okay.
Sure.
Not medically injured, and then we usually have to help them back up.
Oh, okay.
And we're charting them exactly that way, and it's just the numbers, and it's across the board, it's not just here, it's everywhere.
Yep.
The numbers are just staggering how many people are requiring help, you know, people aren't, you know, going into facilities that can, that can better serve them, they're, they're staying at home, and we're, we're hitting the brunt of that. And that's why it's really scary every time we talk about an over fifty-five community, because that's, that's where the numbers, that's where the numbers are.
Yeah, I know. Well, there was a guy here last year telling us, it wouldn't cost us anything, and I was sitting here thinking, a word that I will, I will restrain myself from saying on camera.
Good job.
Yeah, excellent, there you go.
Was there a camera yet?
Oh, yeah, it's okay, we're all good. Okay, I misunderstood what you're, initially I thought you were talking about getting them into a building.
No, no.
I thought, I thought, Northbrook Two is a building built for the age, I thought, what did they do wrong?
I found, and I came up.
No, 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 yeah, 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 okay.
Well, I was thinking something was wrong, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're coined lift assist, is what.
Sure, sure.
And I was like.
Makes sense.
Okay, well, we'll come back.
Yeah, 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 if you could look at the, you know, anything that you think might need to be changed, yeah, just let, come back and let us know, and, please do check with June about that, because it may be fine, you know.
Okay.
Did you come up with something down there, Mike?
Yeah.
I just did a quick calculation, if, if it is indeed, and it's the three captains whose rates were reversed, and if you add, if you add two and a quarter percent, that is fifty-five cents an hour, that makes it twenty-four ninety versus twenty-four thirty-five. And compared to twenty-two forty-six, which is what he put in for the year, that is whatever that was, and then I think you said sixty-eight hours.
Yeah, based on sixty-eight hours.
Per person.
Per month, no, across the board for the three people.
Oh.
So sixty.
Then it's two thousand dollars total.
Two thousand dollars.
So what, what didn't I?
Don't know.
Well, is that, well.
I think you were, because I think you were figuring out the difference as opposed to.
Instead of twelve, there's gonna be a difference between those two.
I, I had twelve months.
So, I think we're gonna, we're gonna send you to June, we'll send everyone.
The expert.
We can entertain the townspeople if you're figuring it out, but I don't think that's a good use of your time or hours.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Are you counting for?
So, I'll make the motion to approve the reserve fund transfer for the second.
It is entertaining, but, you know.
I.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we just sign?
Yep. Okay.
And don't forget your phone.
Yes.
Don't forget your calculator, here, it's my calculator.
The clerk's supposed to sign.
Is that just a calendar?
You can sign in, in her place. Yeah.
Is a motion required?
For the reserve fund transfer?
Yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to deal with it, yes. I just added it to the agenda.
What's that?
For tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe we should do that before.
We can certainly just let him sign, I think.
You, you're having process problems.
Oh, okay.
We can vote to deny it if you like.
Now, now we're gonna deny it.
Right. Well, thank you for, thank you, and for the townspeople, you know, this is like rapid service, getting the tanker back on the road, so.
It's ever been done faster.
Unless you think government doesn't work for you.
Us.
Yes. Oh, thank you, great, yeah, thanks for coming, guys, we'll see you.
Good to see you.
Okay.
See you, lady. Have fun with your numbers.
Firestorm in the castle.
Okay, so the total we're looking at here was three thousand, looks like?
Yeah.
Yeah, he rounded it up.
Okay.
But, mush into a chair.
Date of meeting, today's the thirteenth, three, thirteen, twenty nineteen, number present, voting five. Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
Okay. Um, so. Thank you very much.
They're giving us.
Wait.
Thank you, June.
We have seventy this year in the reserve fund? I thought it was higher.
That's all I have.
Oh, okay.
There's always something.
And you haven't put in your budget yet this year, just saying.
Yeah, we're gonna put it in, because we're special, it's okay.
Either, either, I guess, in your reserve fund.
I think it is ninety, that's what it's gonna, this, you pulled this, you pulled this out of the budget report, right?
Out of the town report, yes.
Okay.
I will just, I will go double check it, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, have you been signing off on your monthly reports that I give you every month?
Probably not.
Okay, because you should've caught that by now, because you get one every month.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Working on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's not saying it, she's just saying.
Yeah, you didn't just get, you know, appropriately hassled, that's life. Okay. So, why don't we do the reserve fund now, since we don't want people to burn down? Do I hear a motion to approve, well, first, is there any discussion on the reserve fund transfer to fix the pumper truck?
None on this end here.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think fixing the tank is a good idea.
This tanker's a good plan, okay.
Essential.
It's actually cheaper than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
I thought they were gonna say like eight thousand or nine.
Usually when people talk longer, they're doing that, because there are a lot of zeros, so I was like.
Keeps getting higher.
So I was sitting here going, whoa, okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer for three thousand dollars for the tanker?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, we put it out there, so. Yes, it meets with our. Approved. We all have to sign it. And approval was. Approved five to zero, so if we can pass it down that way for signing.
Take one down.
We should definitely never be this efficient again, because it's too scary.
They might get used to it.
I know, seriously. Okay.
Do we all have to sign that now?
We do, yes. We'll pass it down that way when it comes back to me. We'll pass it down that way, comes back to me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Unanimous, okay, got it.
Excuse me. Okay. So I'll give this to June.
It's done.
And if you could please record $3,000 reserve fund transfer.
I do.
You had 90, but you spent 20 on needle.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay, that makes sense now. Yeah, see, I was looking at this, I was looking at this thinking that it was the total for the year, I suppose, the current balance. Thank you, that makes me feel much better.
Kinda.
Hey, I don't require that much reassuring, most of the time. All right, cool. Fire e-miss expenses. Okey-dokey. So the next thing on the hit parade, I think, is to let folks, oh, why don't we, why don't we approve minutes now that we've had folks?
Because I left them on the kitchen table.
Well, then why don't we defer?
And they were draft, but, uh, I know that I needed the name of the person who spoke about the marijuana warrant articles.
Or Noah.
Or Noah.
O-R.
O-R-N-E-L-L-A.
Yeah.
Or Noah, Q-U-I-N-N, I think?
Yep.
Was she here last week?
She was, yes.
Oh, and I missed that.
There will be 16 marijuana articles, it's very exciting.
I didn't put it in the minutes, but I didn't have her name.
It turns out eight of them are proposals, and eight of them are like.
Ballot questions.
Yeah, to, if, if one of the first eight gets approved, then you have to approve the ballot question to then enact it. But there are still 16.
At the election.
At the, at the town meeting. Because the warrant is always too short, so, you know. 64. Oh, Lord.
64 articles, I think we're at a record high.
Yep, so, uh, we're waiting for town council to get the approved warrant back to us, it's supposed to come this week. At our next meeting, uh, I wanna start going over the warrant articles, hopefully we can do that in one meeting. What we'll do is, where there are warrant articles that involve spending or taxation, things that are relevant to our function, we will vote on them as to whether we support them or not, and we, whether we support their, uh, whether, whether we support the article or not, we also have to come up with a funding mechanism for it in case it passes.
Right.
Even if we object, right, we have to say where the money would come from if it passes even so. I'm planning to do what Scott had done in the past, which is I'm gonna look at them over the weekend. And I'll make suggestions, I'll email them out to you hopefully on Monday, or late Sunday night if I'm feeling really efficient. And you can start taking a look at them and see if you think the suggestions make sense, or if you have other thoughts. And then on Wednesday, um, we will discuss all of that and, and take votes on the articles that need to be voted on.
I will be out of town.
Okay, well, if you have, if you have really strong opinions about anything, you can let us know, and we'll share it at the meeting.
And I will be out of town.
Wow, then it'll be just the three of us.
And we'll fit around the table.
And we'll fit around the table, so that's excellent.
They're like the old times.
Exactly.
It's like the old days.
People are like, what's so funny in here? I'm like, spreadsheets are terribly amusing, nobody just realizes it.
But I guess I could comment on three warrant articles, because they're, they're, they were changes to the cap, capital plan that we hadn't planned on.
Okay.
One is the mowers for the cemetery. We voted to buy one this year and one next year.
Okay.
And it turns out the whole amount is needed, because it was so much money to replace two mowers.
Yeah.
But it was only for one mower. So, we, it was good logic, but it was wrong. So I talked to Barry, and he's, so that's one change. There's a change with the library septic system. Instead of 100,000, it's 150, because they're gonna include the engineering in it.
Okay.
And the third one was the trash compactor, which we postponed to this year, but we never received a request for it. And it's around, it's 37,000, but I've asked them to go back and check and make sure that number is still good.
Right.
And, because we want a good one.
Yes.
You know, we want.
Well, the last one's lasted us 20 or 30 years, I think, if I recall.
Well, the new one that we just bought.
Yeah. 2012.
It, it, it's, it's not as.
Feeling unwell?
It's feeling unwell, let's put it that way. So, on, on this, and we want a warrant.
Right.
A warranty on this, and so I, I gave them some guidance. But, so the 37 might be a little low, I'm not sure what they're gonna come back with.
We actually had them at our meeting on Monday, and they said it was 37.
They said it was 37, because, so they did check on it, make sure that price was still good and that's the one they want.
Is this a transfer station?
Correct, yes.
Is it the one that crushes the boxes, or it runs, it crushes trash?
I guess.
Anything else you want.
And so that they, and so that we have two working compactors to allow them to switch back and forth to maximize their compacting of each. Otherwise, they would have to dump it perhaps sooner than half full, or sooner than it was ready to be ready for the next demand day.
Exactly, the hauling, I think.
It's actually more, the hauling is actually probably more than the cost of disposing of the product.
Actually, we had, we had the warrant articles, and Mary did a good job of presenting them.
Okay.
I think we took them up, so. But those, those are the only changes, and they should be, they should be, uh, in what we get back from the town council, I think. Although the price, the final prices might not be in there. I don't know what went to town council.
If we knew them, they were in there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you would be so kind as to email me that, just so I have it.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Because I won't be here.
Yeah. And, um, I'm also gonna see if I can, I, I'm not, I have nothing this week but finance committee stuff. I'm gonna see if I can finish the budget spreadsheet. This, the draft one, so that next week we can start looking at that. It's gonna be a Google spreadsheet, I will share it with everybody, so you can, you can all start to take a look at it. And I've set up a meeting with June, she was at school this week, so we couldn't meet this week. Accountant update school, I guess, whatever you call it. And next week.
Accountant update.